Jacobson?
Here.
Fanouken?
Here.
Markort?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Noriko?
Here.
Baker?
Here.
Favor?
Here.
Ray?
Here.
Eight present.
Thank you. Let me ask the officer to come forward for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Please rise.
The flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice in our heart.
Thank you, Officer Coollock. We have before us the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll ask for an approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Markort. Roll call, please.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you. We have before us this evening proudly DeKalb items. I'm pleased to initially recognize the DeKalb High School Forensics Team. This is an IHSA-sponsored activity that allows students to compete in public speaking events. These events range from humorous and dramatic skits to persuasive speaking, current events, and even stand-up comedy. Students choose the event that interests them and compete at tournaments against other high schools. Under the coaching of teacher Greg Solomon, highlights of this year's forensic season include: Senior Ariel Williams became a four-time state qualifier culminating in a seventh-place finish in poetry and finishing second in oratorical declamation in the state competition. Senior Andrew Johannin became a three-time state qualifier and will be continuing his career at Bradley University where he has received a scholarship for his perennial national power. Junior Paul Un became a three-time state qualifier in extemporaneous speaking and finished in the top 10 this year. Junior Molly Stawanoga and sophomores Summer McFalls and Gabby Melms were first-year members of the regional DeKalb Forensics Team and fared well at the state tournament. The DeKalb High School Forensics Team has a tradition of excellence with 15 consecutive regional championships and 10 sectional titles over that same period. Could the forensics team please stand or come forward and be recognized? My daughter, congratulations on your accomplishments and thank you for the positive reflection on the community. Thank you. We have with us this evening members of the DeKalb High School Robotics Team as well. If they would come forward, are they present in the audience? If you want to come up, I'd like to have you at the end of the presentation introduce yourselves by name into the microphone at the podium. So if you could come up on stage at this area. And let me present some background of the DeKalb High School Robotics Team. It's, the team is excited to enter the world of first robotics competitions. With the guidance of technology teacher Denise Fleming, co-mentor for the team, 19 high school students came together this year to create the robotics team FRC 5934. First robotics competitions combine the excitement of sports with the rigors of science and technology, known as the ultimate sport for the mind. On January 9th, all first robotics competition teams across the nation were introduced to the 2016 Stronghold Challenge. Under strict rules, limited resources, and an intense six-week time limit, teams are challenged to raise funds, design a team brand, hone teamwork skills, and build and program industrial-sized robots to play a difficult field game against like-minded competitors. This has been a very busy year for the DeKalb's rookie team. Branding materials were designed, grants were written, tools were purchased, storage components were built, and budgets were created. And then, they began working on a robot. The Crow Robotics Team participated in the Midwest Regional Competition at University of Chicago, Illinois-Chicago, August 31st to May 2nd. They finished right in the middle of the 53 participating teams. Not bad for a rookie team. In addition to this competition, robotics team members have visited three elementary schools to engage students in STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math activities, and presented at the students' Involved with Technology Conference. The team will also be hosting STEM Days for elementary and middle school students and continue to meet with other teams for competition practice. This coming October, the team will participate in STEM Fest at Northern Illinois University. The robotics team has received grants from the Monsanto Foundation, Argosy Foundation, DeKalb County Community Foundation, LifeTouch, and ExxonMobil. They will continue to seek sponsorship so they can continue their work. We're pleased to have some robotics team members here to show you the two, do you have the robot with? Let's see the robot. And what they've learned in their first robotic competition experience. Very good. You want to describe the function?
I guess we're throwing off the order a little bit tonight. So, as he discussed, we had six weeks to build a robot. And we had no idea what we were doing. We learned very quickly that it is not always a good idea to not have a plan before you start cutting things. In the end, it worked out. We had a lot of help from quite a few others, including NIU Robotics and a few mentors from multiple other teams to be able to build what you see in front of you. And then, we also were able to take that to our competition in Chicago and fare pretty well for a rookie team with myself and Bailey Fleming driving.
Very good. I'd like to offer you the opportunity to each speak into the microphone at the podium, give us your name. And I'd like to extend congratulations to the entire team.
I'm Michael Loft House. I'm the coach of the DeKalb High School Robotics Team.
I'm Michael Loft House. I'm the coach of the DeKalb High School Robotics Team.
Give us your year in school as well.
Oh, I teach math.
I'm Denise Fleming. I'm a teacher on special assignment for DeKalb School District. And we've been talking about having a robotics team for a couple of years now, but it wasn't until Michael Loft House came along that we actually were able to make this work. So special thanks to him. Monsanto Foundation was able to give us a $6,000 grant that we were able to use for this year. Argosy Foundation gave us a $6,000 grant. We used $4,000 this year and we'll use $2,000 next year. We just received a grant from YUP as well, from the DeKalb Community Foundation, so we'll use that to buy a tool storage area. Also want to say a special thank you to Steve Kimmel, who's in the audience. He is a parent, but he's way more than a parent. He has helped us build numerous items. He's made numerous trips to Lowe's and Menards for us, so he's been a great help as well. And then the students and NIU students, we've had two great students from NIU. They're engineering students, Adam and Brandon, who have worked with us almost every meeting, and they've been on a first team, so it's great for them to come back and help us and for us to be able to learn from NIU college students. So that's been great.
Hi, I'm Barry Taylor, and I'm a freshman at DHS.
I'm Noah Kimmel, and I am a freshman.
Hi, I'm Matthew Lord. I'm the, I'm a senior, and I'm the programmer for this thing.
I'm Lena Grab, and I'm a senior.
I'm, I'm an engraabe, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Colette LeBlanc, and I'm a junior.
My name is Bailey Fleming, and I'm a senior.
My name is Andrew Bachlin, and I'm a senior and the driver and mechanic for the robot.
So we don't want to ruin your floor. So it is a very powerful robot, and so we actually brought in just two very short video clips so you can actually see what it does, and we can leave it here if you want to come up and get a closer-up look of it. But we have a reveal video that we'd like to go ahead and show you. This is a video actually that Noah Kimmel, right behind me here, he put together, and all teams are really encouraged to put this together, so our NIU students really encouraged us to do this. And so with very little sleep, it was done, and Noah put a lot of work into this, and it really is a neat video showing you what the robot can do. So that video shows us, shows you in the scene house at the high school what we were able to do. And then at the competition, which is, looks very different. There were 12 different obstacles, I believe, and we didn't master all of them, but we did quite a few of them. So this video is 35 seconds. It'll show you just a quick glimpse of the actual competition. So just to talk you through this, there are three-on-three, and you switch between red and blue, so you always have a different alliance. You never really know who you're going to be with until it's time. So you get two and a half seconds, or two minutes and 30 seconds?
Do you speak on the microphone? I'm sorry.
Yeah, so the first 15 seconds are in an automated mode that was programmed by Matthew Lord, and the following two minutes and 15 seconds are myself driving with Bailey Fleming operating the arm there, which flips up and down to collect and shoot the ball, and also lift and put down two obstacles to have the ability to cross them.
Very good. Thank you, and congratulations on forming the team, and good luck in your competitions. We do have a third high school group to recognize. I'd like to ask your patience. If the students could remain, we'd like to get group pictures of all three groups at the end of the presentation. So at this point, I'd like to turn to recognize Anharmonic Fusion, the Acapella Ensemble. You might want to keep the robot for the pictures. Anharmonic Fusion, is Mr. Erickson? Okay. Let me give a brief recap of Anharmonic Fusion's history. Formed in 2010, annually competes in the International Championship of High School Acappella Competition. Under Director Travis Erickson, Anharmonic Fusion's highlights for this year include: Hosting and competing the ICHSA Midwest Quarterfinal Number Four on February 12th, where they placed first out of 10 groups and qualified for Midwest Semi-final Round. At this competition, Anharmonic Fusion member Grace Klenoski was named Most Outstanding Soloist. Hosting and competing in the ICHSA Midwest Semi-final on March 18th, they, where they placed third out of the top 10 groups representing Illinois, Michigan, Missouri, Ohio, and Wisconsin, and submitting a video recording of their performance on March 29th, which won them the first of two wild card spots to compete in the field of 10 groups for National Finals in, held in New York City. At National Finals on April 29th, Anharmonic Fusion member Grace Klenoski was named one of two overall best vocal soloists. One of the five judges, Grammy Award winner Bill Hare, ranked Anharmonic Fusion as the top-scoring group in the National Finals. Anharmonic Fusion would like to express their deep gratitude to the DeKalb community for their extraordinary supportive efforts in competition this year. It would not have been possible for them to compete and advance to the finals of the ICHSA competition without their very generous support and tremendous enthusiasm, the support of which came from the entire community. So I'd like to turn to Anharmonic Fusion to be recognized this evening. Let me start. If Anharmonic Fusion wants to come in the front here and we'll get a group picture of the entire group. You want to perform this evening? Okay.
So the song that we're going to be performing for you all tonight is "Alive" by Sia, mashed up with "Hello" by Adele. This is our third song in our competition set.
I was born in London store. I grew up on the night. Played alone, I played all day long, but I survived. I had to wait till the dreams were all the demons go. Don't change, and the wrong can never go. You still fight, but you're not right, I'm walking low, but I survived. Well, I'm still breathing, I'm still breathing, I'm still breathing, I'm still breathing.
Shalala, 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 shalala.
Hello. I was wondering if after all these years you'd like to me to go over everything. They say time's supposed to heal you, but I ain't done much healing. There's such a difference between us and a million miles. I'm alive. Tell you what, I'm sorry for everything that I've done. I know you never seem to be home. Baby, you never know that I would. But when I wanted, I'm glad I got it. Did all the things that you said that I would. I told you that I would never be forgotten in all this part of you. Hello. Can you hear me at all, but I'm still breathing? How you been at all, but I'm still breathing? I hope you're well. I'm alive. If you're gonna let me down, let me down gently, don't pretend that you don't want me. Our love ain't water under the bridge. If you're gonna let me down, let me down gently, don't pretend that you don't want me. Our love ain't water under the bridge. If you're gonna let me down, let me down gently, don't pretend that you don't want me. Our love ain't water under the bridge.
Did you get the group shot? Okay. Very good. Is the robotics team here also?
Hey Mayor?
Yeah.
Could I suggest maybe one of you, the center, with you to the groups?
Thank you. If we can get the robotics team forward, get a picture with the robot.
If you want, a little bit, can you guys, excuse him? Just two rows.
Just be sure you get them singing together.
One, two, three.
Thank you. I want to hear him sing again, but face us.
Oh, yeah. Right here, please. One, two, three. Got it.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentations. This is our future, folks. Aren't they tremendous? A good group of young people. Hey, oh, Marty, we want an encore, Mayor. Tell him to sing again. We want an encore. Okay, I do have a number of proclamations this evening. I believe, is there a VAC representative? Okay. If you want to come forward and receive the proclamation for Older Americans Month. I, John Ray, Mayor of the City of DeKalb, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2016 to be Older Americans Month, and urge every resident to take time to acknowledge older adults and the people who serve them as powerful and vital individuals who greatly contribute to our community. Thank you from the City of DeKalb to that. Thank you. Secondly, I'd like to acknowledge this morning, I presented a proclamation at Bethany Healthcare, recognizing the week of May 8th through 14th as National Nursing Home Week, and urging every citizen to honor the elderly and disabled residents of nursing homes by visiting or volunteering at a local nursing home to bring good cheer to the residents and appreciation to the staff who care for our most vulnerable citizens on our behalf. And they did a balloon release at Bethany Healthcare this morning, recognizing National Nursing Home Week. Thirdly, Tim Holdeman is going to come forward. I'd like to acknowledge National Public Works Week. I, John Ray, Mayor, City of DeKalb, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th through May 21st, 2016, as National Public Works Week, and call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to thank you all on behalf of the City of DeKalb Public Works employees for recognizing their work. In the time that I've been here, I've come to know many of them and come to observe their work, and I can tell you that we have an incredible group of individuals who are committed to serving their community. That's why they've gotten into the profession, is to serve their community. I am proud to be the Public Works Director. This year, the Public Works theme is always there, and I just want to remind people that whether it be water, or stormwater, or engineering, or the airport, or streets, we're always there to serve the citizens of DeKalb. And if there's ever a time that you need us, please call us, 748-2030, and we'll respond as quickly as we can. Thank you.
Tim, thank you. Sure. VAC, if you could come forward with your proclamation, please. I, John Ray, Mayor, City of DeKalb, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th through May 21st, 2016, as National Police Week, and urge all citizens of DeKalb to honor those law enforcement officers who, through their courageous deeds, have made the ultimate sacrifice in service to their community, or have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes. John, thank you for the service. Thank you. And lastly, I have a proclamation. I, John Ray, Mayor, City of DeKalb, do hereby proclaim May 20th, 2016, as Bike to Work Day, and encourage all citizens to ride their bicycles to work, to school, to the store, to the park, around their neighborhoods, and with friends and family, to promote the personal and societal benefits achieved from bicycling. And I'm not sure if we have a... John Laskowski is coming forward to receive the Bike to Work Day proclamation. John? Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Moving next to presentations, I've got Barb City Manor Annual Report. I'll call on Administrator Maureen Garrity to please come to the podium for that report. Welcome, Maureen.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Ray and City Council members. It's a pleasure to be here tonight when there were so many wonderful presentations. I should have had Mr. Solomon look over my presentation, but he left. I am representing Barb City Manor. Since 1979, we have had the privilege of operating a retirement home in the city's historic DeKalb Hospital building. This past fiscal year, Barb City Manor used City of DeKalb TIF funds to remodel two resident apartments in the east wing. This section of the building is the original DeKalb Hospital building, built in 1921. Plumbing and electrical updates were needed in addition to new ceilings, drywall, and carpeting. Additional closet space was also added, and these improvements have made a dramatic difference. One of those apartments is already occupied. The total cost for that project was $52,528.65, not including the carpet and vinyl. We haven't gotten the bill yet for that installation. For the 2017 fiscal year, Barb City Manor is requesting to use City of DeKalb TIF funds to re-roof two sections of our building. These roof sections are over 20 years old, and this work is necessary to maintain the integrity of the building. Simultaneously, the combustion air system for the building's boilers will be upgraded. The roof above the boilers is one of the sections that needs to be re-roofed, and the boiler-combustion air system will be vented through that roof. Abandoned vents and fan units will also be removed as part of this project. Originally, that section of the building was the hospital laundry, and so it had way more vents and holes in the roof than we actually need now. The amounts for those bids, we've just awarded the roof project bid. That total is $75,740. We just opened the bids for the boiler-combustion air project. The low bid was $51,300 for a total of $127,000-plus consultant fees. We would be using the balance of this year after the apartment remodeling project, as well as the 2017 funds, to cover the cost of the roof and combustion air. On behalf of the residents of Barb City Manor and the Barb City Manor, Inc. Board of Directors, I want to thank you for the City of DeKalb's continued support of Barb City Manor Retirement Home. Barb City Manor remains a very affordable, comfortable, and secure home for the senior citizens of our community, and the support of the City of DeKalb and the TIF funding it has provided has helped us in our mission to offer a safe and healthy option for retirement living to these seniors. Thank you so much. Any questions?
Questions for Maureen? Hearing none, I'd ask you to join me in thanking Maureen.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Turning next to Mary Ellen Shade of Safe Passage. I realize it's not at Mary Ellen, so you can introduce yourself, please.
My name is Linnea Erickson. I'm the Abuse Intervention Services Coordinator for Safe Passage here on behalf of Mary Ellen Shade. I would first like to thank the City of DeKalb and the entire DeKalb community for many years of support for Safe Passage and for support to survivors of sexual assault and domestic violence. Safe Passage is the only domestic violence and sexual assault crisis center in DeKalb County. We staff a 24-hour crisis hotline, provide emergency shelter, and provide long-term transitional housing for victims of domestic violence and sexual assault throughout the county and the northern Illinois region. We have counseling services for children and adult survivors, both male and female. We offer legal and medical advocacy, prevention education programming, and abuse intervention counseling. All of our services and resources for survivors are completely free of charge. We are able to provide these services thanks to the generous support of local citizens, businesses, and our municipalities. Due to your generous support, in the past year, we were able to serve over 700 individuals, providing thousands of hours of service and programming. We ask you to continue that support in the upcoming fiscal year, as the need for our services unfortunately continues to grow, and state and federal funding remains unstable. Safe Passage's mission is to promote the right to nonviolent, abuse-free relationships for all through advocacy, support, intervention, and prevention education in DeKalb County. We thank you for your partnership in ensuring that we fulfill this mission, and we ask that you continue to generously support Safe Passage as we continue working towards fully achieving that goal.
Thank you, Linnea.
Any questions?
Are there questions of Linnea? Well, to Maureen.
I applaud your efforts and wonder how you're surviving, given the state budget crisis. I've read some things in the paper that made it sound like, you know, it's really impacting Safe Passage.
It has been an incredibly difficult 10 or 11 months. We have left some of our major leadership positions unfilled for several months in an attempt to consolidate our budget as much as possible. We've been given generous support by the Mental Health Board and the 708 Board. They've extended some various grants and additional funding to us. We've also had some loans extended by the banks that work with us. So we've been managing to keep our head above water and keep our doors open with full services. We've not had to cut any of our services to this point. However, we have not received any state money over the past year. As the state has no budget, we've received no money from the state. They have passed a bill to release about half of our funding. However, we have not yet received any of that, and that does not account for the past 10 months for which we have not received any funding. So there's quite a backlog of bills and no end in sight to the state budget crisis, which leads our organization to believe that, moving forward in the future, we need to work to be less reliant on state funding and look more to our local community to help us as we provide these absolutely critical services.
Well, thank you for your efforts despite the current lack of support from the state.
Absolutely. It's absolutely our mission to keep our doors open at full capacity. The need for these services does not go away, and we don't plan to either.
And I would thank the community for its support of Safe Passage at the recent Evening of Chocolate, which is a major fundraiser for these services locally.
Yes.
So, Linnea, thank you for the report this evening. If there are not further questions, I'll ask Council to join me in thanking Linnea. Is there anyone wishing to speak to Council and the public? I do have an individual registered, and I'll call on that person when we get to that item in the agenda. But this is the point, if anyone wishes to speak to items not on the agenda this evening.
Does that mean you have to...
Yeah.
...press it now? I'm not well?
Sure. And Jim, I would just ask, we ask public comment to respect a three-minute period, so we won't belabor your recent surgery. How's the knee feeling, or the hip?
It's the hip.
Okay.
First of all, how old do you have to be to be in this older age? What is it? What are the...
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five, really?
Maureen.
Wow. All right, I've been asked to be here. First of all, I'm Jim Mason, Mason Properties, and some of you people know me, and I was asked to be here tonight on behalf of HR Green. HR Green has been working with you people for, I think, the last two years, and it's been brought to my attention that the contract might be up for renewal. And I wanted to tell you of the wonderful experience that I've had with that firm. They came in a little slow to begin with. We lost the other two guys, and these guys found their range, they found what they were doing. They've been very professional, they're on top of it, they work with my engineers, my architects, and I just want you to know that if it was up to me, I'd keep them, I'd talk with Ellen. There are some issues, and so I said to Ellen, if you have issues with management, straighten it out, because it's the people in the field that make the difference, not the eggheads in the top. So, my friends and I, I can speak for a lot of the people that are in my business. They're doing a good job, and I'd like to see them stay and make it two years, or one year, or something like that. If there is a problem, work it out. Dave, you're great. You're great. And then, by the way, I'm on OxyContin, so give me a break. And Dean, I'll get back to you, okay?
Thank you, Jim. Okay. We're at the point of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the... Does anyone wish to remove any items from consent? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda before us. So moved by Alderman Fanouken. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Noriko. Roll call.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Marcourt?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
No.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Fanouken?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Resolution 201648 authorizing an agreement with IVS Incorporated Doing Business as Angel Tracks for the installation of bus video camera systems for the voluntary action center bus fleet in an amount not to exceed $96,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Fanouken. I'll turn to Director DeVita. Or is it...
Yes.
City Manager?
Director DeVita.
Director DeVita.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're here to talk about the third-party vendor for building division services. We have representatives from HR Green in the room tonight, as well as Dennis, our plumbing inspector, I believe is in the rear of the room from Safe Built. The city transitioned in May of 2014 to the provision of these services from an outsourced firm, and there's been several changes to the contract. I think I'll just run through the history quickly for a moment. In May of 2014, they were hired on a percentage rate basis. In September, we added code enforcement, did eight hours a week to the mix, and then in July of 2015, we went from a percentage base to an hourly model, referencing the fact that the volume in the department was growing, and that we would be coming back with a full RFP, as was originally promised in early '14. And in December of 2015, that request for professional services was released. We were only able to identify five firms in the Chicago market that are providing this type of outsourced service, and we did send to each of them. Three companies responded. One declined to bid in the manner which we asked. They only gave an hourly accounting of services for plan review or for inspection, not for a full plug-in building department, like we were asking. And the other two that responded, we found that prices had gone up and things were a little too...
Okay. We're at the point of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the... Does anyone wish to remove any items from consent? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda before us. Some are moved by Alderman Finuchin. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Noriko. Roll call.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to approve items as appeared on consent agenda.
Mayor, could we have a recital of the listings on the consent agenda, please? Could we have a review of the listings?
Thank you. Contents of the consent agenda. Minutes of the Committee of the Home Meeting, April 11th. Minutes of the City Council Meeting, April 11th. Accounts payable and payroll through May 9th in the amount of $2,821,403.97. And lastly, Resolution 201647 authorizing an agreement extension with TruGreen for Emerald Ash Bore treatment for a period of one year from July 1st, 2016 through July 1st, 2017. With that, I'll ask for a motion to approve the items.
A quick question, Jim.
Alderman Jacobson.
I know several years ago, I think we asked that we got an annual report on the ash tree population and how it was faring through the treatments, and are we going to be provided that this year?
We will gladly provide that. We'll put together that.
Is there a motion, then, to approve the items?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Jacobson. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Markort. A roll call.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
No.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Resolution 201648 authorizing an agreement with IBS Incorporated Doing Business as Angel Tracks for the installation of bus video camera systems for the voluntary action center bus fleet in an amount not to exceed $96,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Favor. Discussion? Brian Dixon is here. Are there any questions? If not, I'll ask for a roll call. Roll call.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. Resolution 201649 authorizing a professional services agreement with HR Green for the provision of building plan review and inspection services. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Finuchin. I'll turn to Director DeVita. Or is it City Manager?
Director DeVita.
Director DeVita.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're here to talk about the third-party vendor for building division services. We have representatives from HR Green in the room tonight, as well as Dennis, our plumbing inspector, I believe, is in the rear of the room from SafeBilt. The city transitioned in May of 2014 to the provision of these services from an outsourced firm, and there's been several changes to the contract. I think I'll just run through the history quickly for a moment. In May of 2014, they were hired on a percentage rate basis. In September, we added code enforcement at eight hours a week to the mix. And then in July of 2015, we went from a percentage-based to an hourly model, referencing the fact that the volume in the department was growing and that we would be coming back with a full RFP, as was originally promised in early '14. And in December of 2015, that request for professional services was released. We were only able to identify five firms in the Chicago market that are providing this type of outsourced service, and we did send to each of them. Three companies responded. One declined to bid in the manner which we asked. They only gave an hourly accounting of services for plan review or for inspection, not for a full plug-in building department like we were asking. And the other two that responded, we found that prices had gone up and things were a little too expensive for our own budget. So, we went back and we did some negotiation, and we talked with each firm at length about how they could staff our department using an hourly or a percentage-based model. And in the midst of it all, we recognized maybe there was still another way to go. And instead of paying an outside contractor for some of the clerk services at a higher wage, we could bring a half-time person back in staff, and we are still able to cover that half-time person through the building permit revenues that are coming in. But instead of paying for clerk services, building permit intake, and computer typing stuff in at a plan review rate, which is higher, we could do that in-house at the clerk rate. So, this proposal represents that we believe we should switch to HR Green and hire a part-time person. I think the main reasons for the switch is the ability of HR Green to flex their staff up and down as building activity would increase or decrease. They have a greater volume of staff in the Chicago market, and they've assured us they can staff up and down. There's some other nuances with the two firms. The software used by HR Green is not proprietary, meaning we believe it has greater capability to be exported into whatever financial service software the city uses. And we believe there's going to be greater access to code interpretations as their code professionals are in the Chicago market, not scattered across the country. With that, I think I'll open it up to questions that myself will answer, or we'll have HR Green come up and answer.
Just to expand on that a little bit, Mayor. In the comparison of the software, SafeBilt had proposed utilization of what they call their Meritage software, and that software that was developed by a former SafeBilt employee and is proprietary to their enterprise at this point. HR Green utilizes software that is commercially available software but has been developed for the specific purpose of tracking building and development projects. And with the licenses they would give us, we'd be able to utilize that essentially development-wide in the city. We'd also be able to utilize it with the sanitary district and other governmental agencies we interact with, so they would be able to have real-time updates on project status. We'd be able to utilize it with third-party engineers and planning firms that are doing plan review on projects and be able to know the status and identity of projects more readily. As HR Green does reviews in the field, they do those reviews tablet-based, and the inspection reports are imported into the software immediately. So, we essentially have real-time updating across the board on all of their work. And right now, we track the status of a lot of development work in the city, either on paper or in manually-generated Excel spreadsheets. So, HR Green would bring the software in at no cost to the city, and it represents a significant upgrade for us. It's a... We're essentially leveraging a third-party to get software that we can utilize to make our own operations more efficient and doing that without providing a direct cost to the city. As we've worked with SafeBilt over the past couple of years, they have done a great job. They have done good work with inspections, and we know that the building community is in large part satisfied with them. What we've come to find is that the inspections are often the easiest part of the whole project. And where we have run into problems is on plan review and on technical code interpretations, particularly on larger, more complicated projects. So, with SafeBilt, when we run into interpretation problems, they often exceed the capacity of our staff here at the city. And so those questions are referred back to SafeBilt's corporate office, and we have had difficulty getting responsive answers to questions and consistent answers to questions. So, as we looked at this, it was one of the issues that we explored with SafeBilt. And if you look at their proposal, they said they would keep their current staff at one price, or they would provide the city with more educated, certified, qualified staff at a significantly greater price. As we look at HR Green, their model is they have corporate offices in Illinois in very short distance that are fully staffed with everything from your basic property maintenance code inspector up to an architect. And when we have a code interpretation issue, if it's something that exceeds the level of the certified plans inspector that would be here, they can pick up the phone and call not only a CBO, they can call an architect and get an actual, direct, accurate interpretation of whatever the issue may be. As we have projects that require more or less expertise for the day-to-day fence permits and basic residential additions and basic inspections, we're going to have the staff here to do that. But when we have something like the high hazards room at 3M come in, and that has a lot of very specific requirements, and we have to coordinate our fire prevention with our architectural review and with all the other aspects of it, then they will be able to, for that one project, send down the expert that can handle that and come to a two-hour meeting. And you'll pay for that two-hour meeting instead of paying to have that person sit in a seat here every day reviewing fence plans. So, as we've looked at this, it's the option that gives us access to expertise when we need it, at the lowest cost for that. It provides the staffing that we need to maintain basic services on a daily basis. If we do have a significant increase in building activity, with the staff that they have, they have the ability to ramp up much more quickly. That was something that had been promised to us by SafeBilt, but I think we've had some challenges in the execution of. And from time to time, we've had some staffing issues with their current performance. So, HR Green is a larger enterprise in the Midwest and particularly in Illinois. And as we've looked at their review and we've talked to other communities that they're currently serviced by, we've had very glowing reviews of their services from other communities. And it appears as though what they're able to provide is more aligned with the city's needs right now.
Questions of Director DeVita or City Attorney? Alderman Snow?
What saw... Have we been using SafeBilt's software this past year? Or...
We haven't. SafeBilt had, when we started with them two years ago, essentially, SafeBilt had said, we have this Meritage software, and we'd be happy to launch it. And it's just never something that has been fully brought forward by them. With HR Green, their soft... Their base software is called Pro forma, and then I don't recall the names of the applications that do some of the, like, the iPad reporting and such. But part of their transition commitment would be coming in and getting everyone going on that from day one. So that would make an immediate transition.
Alderman Noriko?
There was mention, I believe, in the proposal on HR Green providing recommendations regarding processes. Can you expand on that?
That's something we're really looking forward to. We're very inefficient. Right now, SafeBilt has been going through and closing out old permits. We have closed out 300 permits since January that are old permits from 2011, 2013, without a software system to catch that they had been inactive. By code, if there's no activity on a permit within six months, it's deemed void. And there had been no process put in place to catch that and close things out. So with a software in place where you're tracking start dates and end dates, it will help us with efficiencies. Right now, everything is being typed into MSI and into Excel at the same time. We don't have full functionality in the MSI, so we'll be able to bring in some of that software capability here. There's about another 150 permits to close out, I believe, so...
Other questions? Discussion? I'll ask for a roll call.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Sorry?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. Thank you, Ellen. Ordinance 201613, amending Chapter 38 intoxicating liquors, Section 3809, restrictions generally applicable of the municipal code as it pertains to happy hour. And this is before us at second reading. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Noriko. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Snow. I'll turn to City Attorney.
This is second reading on the happy hour ordinance. Happy to entertain any questions that you might have. Pompively, I'd like to note that we do continue outreach efforts with the community. Then this ordinance, we're recommending approval of this evening. The server training ordinance is next on the agenda. We have had some further questions from the business community on that ordinance. And so relative to 2016-14, we would ask that you table that this evening, and we'll bring that back at a future meeting.
Okay. So we have before us a motion to approve ordinance 201613. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a roll call on ordinance 201613.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. We have before us ordinance 201614, amending Chapter 38 intoxicating liquors, Section 38.30, server training. This is before us on second reading. It's been requested to entertain a motion. Do we need to put a motion on the floor or just table?
A motion would be preferable. A motion would be preferable.
So a motion to approve?
No, a motion to table is what we would request.
I'd entertain a motion to table ordinance 201614.
I'll move to table until the staff is ready to return.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Finuchin, move to table. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Snow. Roll call.
Isn't the proper term postponed? Table means it can't come back.
With the explanation of the motions that was stated, I don't have any concerns about the accuracy.
So his extra words at the end fix that? Got it?
Roll call.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Ordinance 201615, authorizing a modification of the campus roadway plan to the DeKalb area Retirement Center, Oak Crest, located at 2944 Greenwood Acres Drive, by amending the planned development residential zoning ordinance, including preliminary and final plan approval. And this ordinance is before us at first reading. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Finuchin. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Markort. I'll turn to Planner Hyland.
Thank you, Mayor. Oak Crest Retirement Center, DeKalb area Retirement Center at 2944 Greenwood Acres Drive is currently under construction with a new wing for their campus. As you recall, we saw this planned development proposal about a year ago. This past spring, through the development process, received a phone call from Mr. Steve Sitche, who is standing behind me to my right, indicating that it was their desire to create an amenity to the entryway off of Greenwood Acres Drive that would essentially increase the size of the detention pond near the entryway, which would then have an effect on removing a segment of the private roadway. Unfortunately, to do that required a public hearing, a major amendment to the ordinance, which required us to go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this request at their April 13th meeting, looked at the proposal for the removal of this roadway segment, and with the additional landscaping and signage put in place, they made a unanimous recommendation to the City Council. Staff concurs with their recommendation. So, it's before you tonight with an amendment to the original PUD approved about a year ago to eliminate a segment of roadway in order to increase the size of the detention pond.
And Derek, I understand the language of this modification to the planned development residential zoning ordinance is based on the wording of that original ordinance.
That's right. The use of the property, all things that were approved previously remain intact today. The only amendment is the replacement of what I would consider the site plan specifically for the northern portion of the property where the roadway segment was removed and the detention pond was increased.
And my understanding is the roadway segment is actually a driveway?
It's not a principal roadway for the access to the property of delivery vehicles and so forth? I could... I would agree with that. They're all private roadways, and so they're all internal for access throughout the complex. But the removal of this would not have an impact upon the movement of vehicles, whether delivery or visitors.
And further, my understanding is the current retention pond would be expanded to eliminate a detention area. The detention area would be removed and a retention pond would be expanded.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. Other questions or discussion? I see Mr. Sitche is here. If we need questions from him. Is council ready for the vote? I'll ask for a roll call.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to waive second reading and move forward.
Okay. It's been moved to waive second reading and approve the ordinance amendment this evening. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Markort. Further discussion? I'll ask for a roll call then.
Mayor, I believe we need to waive second and approve.
Wave and approve. Is that correct?
That's the intent of what I said, yes. Thank you.
And the second?
Yes.
Okay.
Ready?
Yep.
Finuchin?
Yes.
Markort?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Noriko?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Favor?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Eight yes.
Thank you for that clarification, Jenny, and for the action, council. Moving next to communications. Alderman Jacobson?
No report.
Alderman Finuchin?
No report.
Alderman Markort? Alderman Snow?
No report.
Alderman Noriko?
Of course. It's been almost a year to the day since Alderman Markort and I were installed. And I want to thank city staff and my fellow council members for orienting me and continuing to educate me. Lots of education still to go. It's been a very good year, a very challenging year. I'm very glad that I'm in this position. So, thank you to all of you, and I'm looking forward to continuing to further the interests of the citizens of Ward 5 and the citizens of DeKalb. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Baker?
No report.
Alderman Favor?
No report.
Okay. City Manager?
I just want to add, last week, I had the opportunity, in addition to Mayor Ray, Alderman Snow, Alderman Noriko, to go down to Springfield as part of the Metro West Council of Government Legislative Drive Down. And this is something the city of DeKalb has participated in as part of the annual drive down. And this was a great opportunity for us as a group to lobby on behalf of Metro West, which is a region which represents municipalities in Kane, Kendall, and DeKalb counties, as well as lobby on behalf of the city of DeKalb. And some of the issues in particular was preservation of the local government distributive fund, or better known as LGDF, or more commonly known as the city's portion of state income tax. And it was a great opportunity, and I'm sure the mayor, the two Aldermen can elaborate, but it really is an opportunity for the city to lobby with the other municipalities, to show and be able to communicate directly to the legislative leaders and our legislators in particular as to how various issues impact municipalities. And the one thing I want to add to the community, I'm very proud of the fact that we usually partner with the DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference. And for years, since the inception of Metro West, DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference always had more representatives from their contingency. And this is the first year that Metro West surpassed DuPage Mayors and Managers Conference, and we had 58 total representing the municipalities. And basically, it's an organization, for the sake of the community, Metro West is an organization that represents over 750,000 voices in our region. So thank you for the opportunity to go.
Thank you. City Attorney?
No report.
City Clerk?
No report.
Assistant City Manager?
No report.
Deputy Chief Petrogall?
No report.
Finance Director Haley?
I just want to say this Wednesday, May 11th, at 5:30, is our first joint city council and finance advisory committee meeting for the budget for fiscal year. We're calling it 2016.5, which will run July 1st to December 31st, 2016. And it'll be in the council chambers.
I'm sorry. Eric Kicks?
I just want to take a second to thank the DeKalb County Community Foundation. The DeKalb Fire Department received a grant the other day for $9,200 for a new extrication tool, which will be placed in the ladder truck, so thank you to them.
Thank you. Director DeVita?
I have a few things to tell you. We are a tech community, as you know, with NIU. I just want to let the community know that June 4th will be the next hackathon at NIU and the Home Student Center in the Sky Room. So it's June 4th at 10:00 a.m. till 6:00 p.m. The Planning and Zoning Commission for May 11th has been canceled, and you'll be interested to hear what's on the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for the 25th of May. We have a special-use sign permit for a bookstore that's looking to come into the junction. So, and we also will be having a workshop on the Planning and Zoning Commission's thoughts on allowing home-based businesses in a garage space with a set of standards and a special use applied to it. Right now, we allow home occupations in the home only. And we've realized there's quite a few of these throughout the community. We only address them on a complaint-based perspective, but we want to talk to the PNC about possibly allowing them if there were standards. Okay?
Thank you.
Oh, and that meeting will be at the police department on the 25th because the finance committee will be meeting in this room.
Thank you, Helen. Director, Alderman?
No report, Your Honor.
Thank you. I would like to acknowledge Northern and the city of DeKalb participated jointly in the celebration of the arts this past weekend. Articra was held May 6th and 7th. Personally, I was able to participate in the NIU theater and dance performance at DeKalb Public Library. The director of the troupe indicated a number of those students hadn't set foot in the new library building, so this was a good motivation to get them exposed to the DeKalb Public Library. Secondly, the Kishawaki Symphony Orchestra performed Saturday evening at Butel Memorial Concert Hall, Mahler's Symphony, and it was a tremendous joint performance of the Symphony Orchestra and also the DeKalb Community Chorus. So excellent work. That was the second annual Articra celebration. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn then. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Markort. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Noriko. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carry it. Thank you.